Normally do business with. Looking for. Yeah. You only want to stay so busy, right?
Yeah, it's still farming too.
Yeah, makes it tough.
Yeah, we could be on beam meal next two weeks. I said, we better. Better back this off.
Yeah. We tried some yesterday.
I already heard about that.
Oh, you did. You must have been down the coffee cup.
No, 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 I think.
Oh, yeah.
How did it go?
Well, it was anywhere between twenty and thirty. We had some down to twenty and we had some up to thirty.
All the same field.
Hundred and one day corn. So crazy. There's I, I mean, I would say we had more of the in the low twenties than we had in the high in the thirty.
The thirteenth, fourteenth of September. In two thousand twelve, we had a wedding go to West Virginia. Fifteen September. And it's well, that'll work out pretty good with first certified because we'll be the fourth day. And we were done the fourth day, eight probably July. And I think I had. Only about fifty acres left of corn in the town back. Well, it wasn't much crop. He got by an old lady take a truck.
Yeah. Been down that line before. Actually, I don't think corn's too bad. I mean, it isn't like it's been the past. What? Yeah, I think you're gonna get a lot of that.
It's gonna be up and down. What's normal, an average of that normal?
Yeah, very true, pretty true. Yeah. Do you know the weird thing was, you know, normally it doesn't slide out of a truck when it's really wet.
Yeah.
This stuff comes out of the truck. I don't get it. You know, normally it's, you know, sticks. Yeah, this doesn't, this stuff is slide, neither supplies.
Yeah. Well, the experts, we should have been out there a week ago, but we weren't. But we weren't here.
Had a different head on, did a different deal.
Better than article years ago, but a lot of it, well, you should have got this hang at a certain time in the night. When do we, when do we sleep? What do we, I mean, supposed to go out during the few stills and say, there's like old without food of class or whatever.
Pretty hard to do.
Yeah. I hope they call the meeting order and start the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the United States of America. In the business with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Here.
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 Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none, approved agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Two minutes.
Move, move to approve the minutes.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Yes.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Manny?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
Motion approved. Are there any visitors to be heard that aren't on the, on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to Norway Township. And we've got three superintendents from Norway here. Where would you like to start?
Well, I'm gonna turn it over to Cal. He said we'll work on this. Okay.
You'll have to move the microphone over to him. Yeah, yeah.
Button up.
Button up.
Yep. We're, we're talking about Meyer Grove.
Yep, four fifty-four.
I guess that started in two thousand eighteen and we're post. Post by game fish and parks, they said they do all the work. Sending an application, they did. We told them right up front that Norway Township cannot handle a hard surface. We got approved for that grant. Yeah, that's what we're at today. So. We need somebody to take that road and, and take the responsibility for maintenance of it.
So you guys need to have a meeting? No, a formal meeting to be able to turn that road over to us.
No, okay, you know. We have to get back with you. We have to talk to the lawyer for towns and townships. Just exactly what we need to do. Another thing is that you guys probably need to. No, you guys need to get ahold of somebody and see if that grant is transferable.
It is.
It, it is for sure.
Yeah, because we can, the way we would set it up is you guys would. Would have the authority to have it built. But we'll sign, you know, we're willing to sign an agreement on the consensus that we've had that once it's completed, we'll take it over. And that'll be in place before they'll ever start. It's just, it's just if they take three years to do it, you're still gonna have the gravelling and the snow removed. But we'll have it in the resolution that as soon as that road is completed, we'll take it over. If that's what you want to do. You guys need to have your formal meeting to make that decision if you, if you still want to do this. Because we can't, I'm not saying we can't. I wasn't, we weren't comfortable just coming in and taking it.
And you know they should get this grant, who?
Uh, they were, the, the game fisher parks were here. It's first of August.
Well, you need to talk to. The federal DOT. Federal DOT is in charge of this.
Okay.
They're, they're the money people.
Well, whoever they were, they were speaking on behalf of whoever, because they come in and said, it's a hundred percent funded now. Nobody's gotta pay anything.
Do you have funds available?
Right.
Yeah. We're supposed to do a flat study this year. And I guess that's where they come in and they're gonna do all the maintenance and all that stuff. So when they let that out for. Contractors, you know. Now, I, I don't know if that would happen coming in too high and they can say, no, we don't, they don't want to do it.
Right. But you guys have to decide first before we go any farther. If you want it to happen, it's your role.
I don't know. We're just gonna have to talk to our lawyer for towns and townships. Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Why was the county willing to take on more maintenance on that road?
Since an oil road to a heavily traveled area.
Okay.
And where else do you get an oil road paid for for free?
Yeah, okay.
I mean, if you, if you guys want it, we're willing to take it over. We're not gonna force the issue.
Oh, okay.
That's why I want you guys to have your meeting. So your township can have input.
Yeah.
And make the decision whether you say yes or no. All we're saying is. We're not, we're interested.
This is not an option.
Yeah.
And as far as the township goes though, I mean, they would have no expense whatsoever to that road. Why wouldn't they want to turn it over? Because.
I'm not gonna say.
You have no gravel costs. You're done with that road. So from a, from a maintenance and cost standpoint, it's a no brainer.
That's why I want the township to have their meeting, because I'm not gonna sit here speculate on why or what, why they wouldn't want.
But we also want to make sure that we have everything properly in order. So it's done right.
Yep.
All the tears across the eyes, you got it, you know, everything. And see, and they do that a lot. I mean, out in Grayford County, we took our township and turned it over to the county. Because our township wasn't big enough to have a motor grader and all that. And we just turned. Those roads in, into the county and they maintained them. And our tax base for that percentage of the road just went straight to the county. I mean, it's not like it's never been done before.
So the funds wouldn't have to be transferable? Because you guys will actually still be in charge of the road as it's being built.
No, but, no. The federal DOT is in charge of how that road will.
Yeah, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna take the road over until it's built. So the funds wouldn't have to be transferable, because the funds are to Norway Township, correct? So you guys will be in charge of getting it built or however technically. We just wouldn't step in until they said, yep, the road's open. And that'll be in writing before they ever move one teaspoon of dirt. That you guys would know.
And it says in this email that the federal highway administration and the central federal lands highway division is gonna be the ones that's doing all the. The dirt work and they're drawing up all the plants. The township has really no responsibility to draw any plants, so they don't have to stick a dime.
Right.
That was explained to them right up front.
Yep.
Norway was the township that.
Now, that's our understanding too. But, you know, one of the reasons for us to take it too is that we, we've got timber road running by, right by there. We've got the north extension that goes up to Highway fifty. So we have a similar road already in place and it's just adding a mile to our system. We're already going to be working on those other things. Our equipment will be there for doing. Repairs and upkeep on, on that road. So it just makes sense for us to, to pick it up. We, we know you guys aren't equipped for that. For keeping up an oil road. So it just seems to be a win-win all the way around.
And is there something to the fact that once you establish that road and oil that all the way down Meyer Grove? That the, the state game fish will help pay for the maintenance from Highway fifty down to Meyer Grove two? Or is there anything like?
Game Fisher Parks, but we can add it to the federal.
To the federal since, so you're actually not only getting the road benefit, but you're getting the benefit of some maintenance on the road all the way to fifty.
Yeah, because it'll all be, what they call it, a feeder road?
Yeah, it's a feeder road. It's a, falls under, I can't remember the name of the program. It's a essentially a. Higher density road that qualifies for federal funds to help maintain it over time.
Is this a yearly deal or is it a one-time deal for maintenance from the?
From the Fed?
Yeah.
No, it's added, it's forever. It's, it's for FEMA.
Yeah.
Anything were to happen to the.
So actually, the county would be benefiting from that extra. What, five miles?
Is that what it is?
I think it's three miles from my place. It's two, well, it's a mile, mile two. The gravel, every about four miles of road there.
But we could add to the FEMA.
So they'd be making, so the county would be picking up some money for maintenance, some.
Well, it's not maintenance. It's anything drastic happened to that road if it got washed out or.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not like we're gonna get just free money.
Oh.
My question was, would you get X amount of dollars every year towards maintenance?
No.
Oh, okay. It's just for disaster.
Which I don't know what it would take. I mean, eighteen to nineteen. Pretty tough down there. Anyway, I'm on that road, nothing. What? Never say never.
Yeah, FEMA isn't always easy to get money out of.
No, but I mean.
No.
I don't know what type of weather event it would take.
Yes.
I agree. Well, who knows anymore?
Right.
Okay, I guess our next step is we'll confer with our attorney for towns and townships and see how we proceed, the proper way to proceed. And keep in touch with the commissions, commissioners. So it's done properly. But my biggest worry is we do it the right way. Right? You know, it's up to try to benefit. The most amount of people.
There is a deadline, but I don't know the date yet. It said it was coming up. But when these funds will go away.
Yeah.
Microphone, Travis.
Oh, sorry. I must lean too far away. There's a deadline for the funds that I was telling them, but.
You don't remember what?
They just, they never did tell us what that date was, but they, they said it was coming up, but that was the first part of August, so.
Will anybody from the county commission reach out to this James? That's with the, with the federal lands? And, and tell him that you're in their, the township is working on that so that they know we're not just dropping it? Because I think I sent, didn't I send you an email from him?
Yeah, and it was distributed to everybody else too, so.
So I just want to make sure somebody from the county contacts them and tells them that we're interested. Because earlier we, that they, that the township wants to do that, because the last that they knew, the township denied the, doing the road. So.
Yeah.
To make sure they know.
Well, they were in here to talk to us.
Okay.
Yeah. And we, and we talked to a guy from the state too that was.
He has nothing to do with this though.
No, but forgetting it switched over so we can get added to the Fed system.
Stupid thing go through the day where we missed the whole on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think the biggest danger now is exceeding their time limit. So if the township can have, you know, a, a, a meeting soon. And, and just determine that you are willing to go ahead with this and then we can immediately have a meeting afterwards. You know, which we could pass a resolution that outlines the fact that you will do the work and we will take the road. But we wouldn't want to do that without something in writing from you guys that said. You know, you're, you, you would, you affirmatively would like to give up the road to the county. And then at that point, we do our resolution and then everything's in place and the feds can do their thing and, you know, the, then, then the, the, the road would automatically come to the county at a. You know, at a, a certain date and.
They never mentioned a specific date that when they met with you, did they?
They didn't know it. He didn't have it on him at the time. They were supposed to get it, but I have not seen it.
The, the individual that contacted me. From the federal DOT. Was earlier this summer. He switched jobs. There was another individual supposed to contact me. He's never contacted, contacted. You people know more about this road than we do.
I would say get your meeting set up and be in contact with your attorney.
Okay.
I would have the decision made before the time factor runs out.
Yeah, if we know the time frame, yeah.
Well.
Who was the person that was in, could I contact him? That was at the August meeting from the.
I'd have to get that from Kerry.
There was two, yeah, correct.
Yeah.
And they were from National Park Service.
Yeah.
Both of them were?
Yes.
Okay, so are we talking National Park Service or South Dakota Fish Game Parks on this?
No, there was National Park Service.
National Park.
Correct.
Yeah, they're in Yankton.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And they're, they're really anxious to get it, to get it done because it's a major. Entry and exit point for the river.
Okay.
It'll be much kinder to everyone's trailers. I think my trailer is out. Yeah, that, that road is rough on trailers.
Well, if we can, we'll work on our end and if you can find a date or somebody could find a deadline, so we know what we're up against would be very helpful too.
Yep. Find the minutes.
I'm just trying to go through the minutes here quick and see who that was.
Was it from August thirty-first?
They were here in August. I mean, that might have been when we approved it, but I thought it was August. Second, whatever that first meeting, August was, I thought they were here.
I think it was around the seventh, because I was gone for that.
Well, they were from the Yankton office. We probably called up there. Somebody will.
Guys, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. I had emailed out the minutes to Calvin last week with the pages. Where you guys met with the park service and then the guy from the state. I can email Milt Har with the park service and see what the deadline might be for that project. And, and I think that Larry Dean from the state was going to get Rod the information on. On that resolution that you guys were talking about.
And you can get that to Calvin there, Kerry?
Yeah, I can do that. Ms. Calvin, I think I have your email address.
Yeah, you should have all of ours to be on top of it, please. The county can just give, give you guys a resolution, can't you?
That, that's how we would end up taking this.
Yeah, so couldn't the county draft a resolution that they could look at so that it's a simple process that, because I'm sure you've already got some from other roads that the county's taking over for the township. Just draft a resolution, give it to them. They look at it and they can sign it and it's simple, you know.
They don't sign the resolution. All they have to do is at their meeting, just say yes or no.
That's it.
And then just hand us the minutes and we'll do the rest.
And you'll take care of the rest of it. Well, that's pretty simple.
You know, all they've got to do is say that they're gonna accept the project.
All right. Thanks, guys. Yep.
And looking at those August thirty-first minutes, it does indicate that Larry Dean, I think, was gonna draft that resolution and assist with that.
Right.
Because he had some federal process he needed to work with.
You know, that was the meeting where we talked to Larry from S, South Dakota DOT. And it wasn't the meeting immediately before that when. Yeah, when the. Two guys, I think, were here from Park Service. And I zoomed in on that, so I. You know. Harder to assimilate everything.
That would be Milt Har, H A A R, and Dugan Smith?
Yes.
From the National Park Service.
Yeah, I know Milt was one of them.
And Dugan.
Yeah.
I know Kerry said Milt.
Oh, I got it. You guys have any other questions?
No, unless you do, I guess we could move on and we can move on with your agenda.
Yeah, I think if Kerry gets you that information, what the date is, go from there and it'll be good to go.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, guys.
Rod, are you ready?
Sleeping.
I'm here.
Do you have anything on latins yet?
We did the elevations yesterday. From the east end of the. Of what he wants to clean out back to the west. The water should all run back to the west. Uh, there's six foot of fall there. With some high spots. So there's, there's some cleaning to be done, but it doesn't have to be real drastic. But I did not receive. A driveway application, because you gotta take driveway out. Um, I mean, it's a little one and he wanted to put a bigger one in and to clean through there. So I don't know if he dropped it off at the owner's office. Or not, but he hasn't. Brought that forward yet, but. As far as the ditch cleaning. I have no problem with it as long as he doesn't get too carried away.
So he's, he's gonna do it?
Yeah, he, he had somebody hired to do it. They were there the day I stopped and looked at it with him. I, I'm not sure if it was that Dana. Uh, from three D digging or, or who it was, but. I told him that if they dug it, had to reseed it, follow all the, you know, what we require everybody else to do, so.
One four X, two on four H. So we can approve the ditch cleaning?
Yeah, I think so. We just, yeah, have to get ahold of him and tell him that before he. Puts the driveway in. We need a driveway permit from him.
Okay. Are you gonna contact him or do you want me to?
I, I can get ahold of him.
Okay.
And we're up there. Checking on that microservice project anyway, so I could just take one along with me and give it to him.
Wishes of the board on cleaning?
Well, they gotta tear the culvert out, the driveway out. I'm assuming he's gonna clean up both sides of the driveway, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
So.
We're just proving the cleaning.
Yeah, I realized that. But the only thing is, how's that gonna work with the dri, till we know what the driveway is? How can you really prove the cleaning of the ditches on both sides? He's gonna tear the driveway out. That's why I'm asking.
So he's gonna dig from culvert to culvert?
That's all he's gonna do now?
No, no. The driveway's in the middle of the field.
Okay.
Culvert's on one end, you know, on each end of this property. He's gonna dig the hole. He's gonna clean what it needs to get from one culvert to the other. We're not worrying about the driveway. That'll have to get reset once he's done digging.
Okay, so then I, I'm fine. I thought, you know.
No, he's not going from. The driveway will come out. He'll just clean it like there was never a driveway there and then come back and put a driveway.
Then he'll come back for the driveway.
Yeah, okay.
I'm good with that. I'll prove it then.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, shouldn't we specify in some way what he's doing? In other words, I, I, I'm a little nervous about just saying clean the ditch, given that, you know, we've seen a lot of ditch projects go awry. I mean, maybe we should have some specific language or a proposal from him as to what he wants to do that we then approve, because if we just approve ditch digging. You know, we, we, we have no. you know, we, we, we have no, we have no control over what happens after that.
Well, that's where I come in, I guess, because I'll be up there when he's doing it to make sure. I guess before, before, the only thing we've told them is they had to, they had to make sure they reseed it. And I've always checked on them when they're doing these projects, so. But that's up to you guys.
Well, we can, we can specify that it can't go any lower than the culverts that cross the roads, right?
Yeah, well, I don't want him to go that deep even. Because that's quite a bit of fall from the east side. I, I'm thinking if we're talking a foot, digging out a foot, maybe two at a couple of high spots is all we're talking, then cat tail by the culvert.
Well, Rod's going to be up there.
I, I would say that, that if we approve it and then perhaps add the language that it would be under the supervision and direct direction of our, our county highway supervisor. That's, that's sort of understood, but if we specifically say it, that would.
Yeah, so if, if that's an amendment, I'll second it.
Okay. You were going to say something, Rod?
Well, I just said that's what we've done in the past is what Dick just said, under supervision.
Okay, so I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Butler?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Benny?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Anything else, Rod?
Um, just one thing, we're one short. Employee again. I fired Mr. Hessy last Wednesday. So I was one ahead replacing Rick when he retired, so we're back again, so I haven't decided yet on how we're going to proceed, but I contacted Kerry last week and said he no longer works here. Then the microservicing, they should be done Thursday afternoon if it doesn't rain. They got everything, the loop over there, Wakanda to Frog Creek, back to the county line, there's South Hub City as we speak, and they got to go across by Leroy Larson's old place, four miles that way, so they figured they'd be out here Thursday late afternoon, so everything's going good with that.
Is that chip sealing too, Rod?
Nope, that's just the microchip, uh, microservicing.
Are we doing chip sealing this year?
Nope.
Okay.
That's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody have anything for Rod? Thanks, Rod.
All right, thank you.
So we'll go to the vouchers at the bottom. We were sent new ones?
No, I think Kerry said there aren't any.
No, she sent them again.
She sent them?
Yeah.
I haven't seen them yet.
Early this morning.
Right.
Well, I wouldn't have seen them.
Read through them just before the meeting, so.
Yeah, Jessica sent them.
Yeah.
We, um, we don't have any new vouchers this time around. Jess had a sick kiddo and, you know, being in Rapid City, I can't really access everything, so I wasn't able to send those off to you guys last night. So we'll have to do those next time.
Well, we got something this morning.
We got vouchers this morning.
Oh.
Yeah, Jessica sent them.
Oh, she sent them. Awesome. Okay, I wasn't sure she'd be able to, but that's great.
We can certainly wait till next time if you, you know.
Yeah, I, I haven't.
We need to go through them today. We know we're going to make, take the time. And just read through them.
Yeah.
We're going to have to, in the future, we're going to have to figure out how to get these on the agenda quicker somehow. Need to be paid in a timely fashion.
Yeah.
And we can't wait till the end of the month.
Right, so I, I have nothing. I mean, nothing was sent to me this morning.
Should be there.
The only message I have is from Kerry saying we won't have vouchers. So I, I don't know if, maybe there was an email address problem or what the problem was, but I don't have it.
No, but I have.
I have none.
I just sent her a message, maybe she'll send it to you.
Okay.
Or I can send them to you.
Okay.
Hey, Travis?
Yes.
I did have one more thing for Dick and Betty. Making sure they received the notice of our transportation plan kickoff meeting Thursday at 11:00 AM.
Yep. Yeah, and I, I RSVP'd, I'll, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll be there.
I did too.
Thank you.
This, this, I just happened to see it. I forgot to bring that up, so. Thank you.
Did you find it, Betty?
No, it's not here.
It says it.
Is it Elizabeth or is it Betty?
It's Betty.
Betty dot Smith.
Okay. So it, it was sent to ET Smith 619.
Oh, okay, so that's, that's a different email address completely. That's a, that's my none.
There, you should be getting it now. I forwarded it to you.
Okay. Got it.
I read through it this morning, but I didn't, I don't have, I can't get it up now.
Oh. So, do you need them again, Mike?
Yeah, send it, they, they, yeah, well, yeah, I, I read through them this morning.
Yeah, I, I don't check that other account every day.
Well, it shouldn't. That's your personal one, right?
Right, that's my personal account. Yeah.
Should become a decommission order.
I'll just send it to you, Mike.
Thanks.
And I just got it from Jessica too with this.
That's right, that's expedited until the end of the month, is it?
Right.
Yeah, we need to get them approved today. Let's take it. Yeah, next week.
Sorry for that.
What's that, Phyllis?
Oh, I had to quickly get something, so.
You didn't miss anything.
Ah gee.
Yeah.
I didn't see anything that jumped out.
I'll entertain a motion then.
Move to approve. I'll second it.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? You need a few more minutes, Benny?
Okay, yeah, just one more minute. Okay.
Good, okay.
Good to go.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Butler?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Yes.
Benny?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Motion passes. We got a property complaint from Mike Gobel.
That's not the house that burnt that time, did it?
It must be.
I think it is. That's what I was trying to decide, but look at the pictures.
I couldn't tell from that.
I couldn't tell either.
But I didn't get down there.
Yeah. I didn't either. I was going to and I just make it over there.
I'm pretty sure it's the one that, that had the fire.
But the only thing is, I mean, it looks like, when you look at that bin in the background there though.
I thought the house was taken care of. This may be a barn or something in the back.
Yeah, yeah.
And the taxes, am I right? The taxes, half of the taxes were paid this year.
Yeah.
So how is it? Our, I can see where we might request or advise or something, but is it our responsibility?
I don't know. I know, we can't hear you through the computer.
Oh. It did have a fire quite a few years ago. I don't know how many years ago it was. It's not the one on the corner that you're thinking that had a fire. Yes, it's over, it's like the street behind it. And I've had a couple of different people come in and ask about it. Because evidently there's lots of animals living in it. And I've been told that the furnace and everything has been removed. Somebody's came in and stole it. And it's a hazard is what they're wanting. They want something done with it.
Can we condemn it?
Yeah, so, so this is an Alexis question, yeah? So what, 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 what can we do here? Is there, is there, or, or, I, I don't know, has anybody tried talking to the property owner about?
They've not been found. I think it's the mortgage company that's paying the taxes.
Because it seems like maybe the first step is to, you know, provide some kind of notice to the owner.
Um, I did talk to Matt, the fire marshal for here. And I think he can do something. But I think somebody has to request.
Because we never, we've never made him our fire marshal.
Okay.
We started that process and then it died.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So he would have no authority out there either right now.
Okay, okay, I don't know, I just.
I know we started, but we never got back from the city on, if they would allow.
Oh, okay.
That was my last recollection of where we were at on it, but we've never condemned anything that I'm aware of.
Is, yeah, I'm just wondering if there's any mechanism that we have to do that.
Wasn't there someplace over in Meckling that you can condemn? Right there on that Lake Service Road?
Well, not since I've been on here.
Okay, and I was, right after I first started, I believe, and so I don't remember all the details.
I know we've been asked before in a couple of different properties and we've just never, nothing's ever come of us.
Yeah.
So that's my recollection is every time that we have kind of started down this path, I mean, this is not, it's something that's just going to require some time and it's gonna, yeah, I think the last time we had a discussion about this, this, this involves us instituting a civil action against the property owner. And last year when we were doing that or we were reviewing that, you know, all the civil proceedings got put on hold really because of COVID. And I don't know whatever happened with the last property that we were even talking about, but abatement of a nuisance, a public nuisance may be abated without civil action by any public body or officer as authorized by law. But then it goes on to state that a municipality, county or township may defray the cost of abating a public nuisance by taxing the costs thereof by assessment against the real property on which the nuisance occurred or against the real property abutting or adjoining. In this case, talks about the unrepaired sidewalk, which, I mean, that's not really what we're looking at here. If the nuisance abated is an unsafe or dilapidated building, unrepaired sidewalk, junk, trash, debris, or similar nuisance arising from the condition of the property, the municipality, county or township may commence a civil action against the owner of the real property for its cost of abatement and lieu of taxing the cost by special assessment. Any private person may abate a public nuisance. And I think that may have been some of what's happened in the past is that neighboring property owners have taken it upon themselves to pursue that. I can look into to this further and see what process we'd have to go through. But I do remember us specifically talking about that one house that had burned down and then I thought that something had happened. And that was taken care of in another fashion because I know we didn't initiate something.
Yeah, you know, I, I know the city of Vermillion does this routinely with lawns. You know, if you don't mow your lawn, they come in and mow it and charge you whatever it is, 45, 50 bucks. It happened to a neighbor of mine and he was really mad. You know, my first choice would be to, you know, get the, you know, contact the property owner and say, you, you got to do this or, or, or we'll do it. And, you know, give them a pretty, pretty short, short timeline, but I, I think, you know, from what, what you said, you know, we'd have to document the, the nuisance. And it seems like we've, we've, we've kind of done that. It'd be great if one of us went out there and took a look at it, but, but I, I would propose to, you know, I, I'm sure the bank knows who, who owns that property. And contact the bank and, you know, just make it happen.
You said the mortgage company.
I think that's who did it. I, I, I look, I know the taxes have been paid, but, and I, I want to say when I looked, it was the mortgage company that was paying it.
Yeah, well, nobody's living in that house. Oh, animals, right, oh, right, but nobody.
Well, I mean, the things like the lawn mowing and the sidewalk and those types of things, I think, are going to be contemplated under some other municipalities' power, but I, I don't know, I don't know what their ordinance would be in that regard. And I am noticing that some of these public nuisance ordinance or statutes were updated in July of 2020. So maybe I need to go back and take another look at if they've simplified the process for us.
Because I know one property that the county took on taxes, the city had tore the house down and assessed that cost to that property. So I was just wondering what process they have.
Wasn't it the house that, didn't we have a house at Irene? On the Clay County side? That, that, but they ended up that the, the property owner next door to it ended up bought the property.
But that house was still standing.
Yes, the house is still standing, but he wiped it out then afterwards.
Probably.
Yeah, but that was the, he wanted, that was the, that's how they took care of it.
Right, but there was, there was one property we took that the city
Right.
long before we took it, actually came in and tore the house down.
Right.
And I was just wondering what mechanism they have in place that.
That was the one up by Carr Street, yeah.
Yeah, that either we could use or I don't know how we.
Yeah, I don't know. We'd have to have something.
Drew, can you find out from Jose what they use? Or what authority, I mean, it's, it could be difference between municipality and county too, but to see what they use to be able to do it. And how they initiated them.
And maybe loop Alexis in on that, that conversation.
Should we just table this till next meeting then? Do we get more information?
Can't really do anything until then.
I move to table.
Second.
A motion and a second to table. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Butler?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Ben? Yes.
Benny?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, the Wicks clerical contract. The second amendment. Kerry, is there a copy of that in your office? Fine.
Yeah, sorry, um, I, I do have a copy. Nicole could probably just print it out of the packet too for you.
Oh, I guess it'd be in this package then.
Yeah.
Do you?
Do, do you need a, a motion?
Yes.
Alright, so I move approval of the amended WIC contract.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes. Yes.
Andy?
Yes. Yes.
Motion passes.
Still.
Yeah, yeah. The last known address for the owners is that address.
Yeah, I know. I tried to go and look through the table last night.
So what we have left is the second reading and the budget discussion. So I'm gonna call a recess till ten o'clock.
It does look like a drink though, right? Look at that.
Yeah.
Cause it just gone and it's, it's, and this is just trees or something growing alongside of it.
We're back in session. Uh, now's the time for the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero five. Uh, an ordinance creating license regulations for medical cannabis establishment.
Have a quick update. The state of South Dakota Department of Health put up another draft yesterday of their rules. I was just reading through it this morning. As far as our ordinance concerned, on my first brush through, I didn't see anything we were in conflict with. They kept outdoor girl operations. They kept the deconfliction. So if, uh, we have more than one application in the county, they will deconflict it through a scoring system lottery kind of deal. And the third, okay, there was something else that we could follow, but that hadn't changed. So we're, we're still in the pipe. There's no big. I think a lot of the changes, it looks like going forward are kind of the home grow. And, uh, yeah, the, the individual stuff as far as licensing for the facilities and everything looks pretty much the same so far.
Sounds good. Push this to the board.
I'll move to approve the second reading.
Second that.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Danny?
Yes. Yes.
Motion passes.
Yeah. I read through most of Yankton's last night again, just to have another look at that. There's quite a, quite a spread in, in licensing philosophies among the counties and cities as close I can tell. Uh, for, well, for which, I guess what? Yeah, for licensing, yeah.
Are they doing all work facilities or?
Uh, no, I think, I think they were just doing what they had to do too so far. With mention of other.
I was surprised by Sioux Falls. They allow five dispensaries. That's a.
Five dispensaries for Sioux Falls and fifty thousand dollar app fee.
Really?
And that's, I was not being flippant when I said we should have a twenty-five, fifty thousand dollar app fee because.
But that was, that was addressed at the state level too. They, I mean, that question was asked on what kind of app fee?
It just say reasonable. What's reasonable for, for yours? Yes.
What's a liquor license in Sioux Falls?
Half a million.
Yeah, and I, I, I think you also have to, I mean, I think you can come up with like a market, uh, you know, sort of a, a market amount. What, 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 what's the average across the country? And that would be kind of reasonable. And if you go way over that, you that's probably unreasonable.
Cause at the state level, they asked the lady who drafted the policy. She's, she was thinking that five to ten thousand. That's what the state called their number cells.
Yeah.
I didn't know. I suppose, I guess they just said reasonable amount.
Yeah, they said reasonable amount. And my, my thought is, is that, that we do not know what our unanticipated and indirect costs are going to be from uh, having licensed, licensed holders in the state and have their, uh, as a result of their operations. And we don't really have a good idea of what that would be. And, uh, it could be that we start out at five thousand and if we end up with a lot of activity that Lexi's gotta handle, you know, we may decide that, uh, renewal fees should be twenty-five K or whatever. So at this point, I, you know, I, I think that, uh, perhaps five K is a reasonable amount just to have what it's gonna take for us to, for Drew's activities and getting this up and going and then, then going on and, and, uh, having a line at his office maybe, who knows, but.
I thought we did ten. Did I not read that right?
Five.
Oh, okay.
Five.
Five and then.
Her.
Yes, yeah.
So if you did both the manufacturing and the, that might be, like you had the two on one location, that's.
Correct. It's five per, per establishment. And then the renewal fee for each establishment is five K yearly.
And that's what the Department of Health has in their stuff right now too is five thousand. And then it says the fees imposed into this section shall increase annually based on index factor. So.
Yeah.
Once things get rolling, like you say, and you see what the cost might be.
So it's, see, it's way different for us than it is for a city. A city is going to generate tax revenue from each of these establishments. And we have no means of generating any revenue, uh, to cover any costs that we may have going down the road other, other than the, these, uh, application fees.
The only thing is, you know, if you turn it around and you have a five thousand dollar application fee, then the next year you come roll around, you jump to twenty-five thousand. Just using it for example, I mean, if I'm in the business, that's a heck of an increase. You know, to have, but I guess if you're in the business. I mean, I hate to have that happen in my business, you know?
Well, Dick's basing that all and so on if there's any problems.
That's right.
Don't cause us any problems.
Yeah.
Don't cause, don't cause us any problems if you won't increase the.
Okay, I agree, yeah. You're the good guy.
Yes, yes. And that would be the discussion that went into the, any changes to that fee.
Yeah, very true.
Again, I, I guess if we had a lot of problems, I'd be pretty emphatic about raising the cost.
Yeah.
And since we only would have one license in the county, if we know who they're talking.
Yeah.
Who we're talking about.
Yeah. Yeah. Enough said.
Provisional budget discussion.
Yeah. I have a question. Um, in the money that we have what, put aside for building? That's two thousand twenty-one, correct? Or is that ongoing? And is there room in that to hire a building supervisor, manager, maintenance manager, whatever the title might be?
That money got moved.
Thank you.
To building fund. So that's, that's there to be used as a building fund. I don't, I don't know if we can use that for personnel.
I don't either. That's why I'm asking. And if not, we really need to look at where and how that can be funded. I don't know how, but this cannot, oh, I was.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, if I can interrupt for a second. So that money is assigned within the general plans. Um, when you guys assigned it, you assigned it for building projects. Um, caveat to assigning things is you can unassign them with a motion at any point in time. So should you choose to use it for a building maintenance person, you can unassign a certain amount of those dollars for that. Um, that's your choice. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know how the, you know, the historical people or the public would feel about that, but I mean, I think they agree with the maintenance aspects, so maybe there wouldn't be any problem with that.
I feel strongly that we are placing more and more other responsibilities on Carrie's office that you know, it's not just the building, it's PR, it's, um, you know, it goes on and down the road, it will be, we will have to look at additional security for the courthouse too, but that's to look at down the road. You know, our budget will be increasing. And, and if we can find any way to at least cover the ground within this year, next year for a building maintenance supervisor, whatever the title might be, to help with getting some of these improvements accomplished.
You know, Phyllis, I, I, I think you've really, you've got something there and, uh, you know, I, I don't know if one building has enough, um, supervision in it for, um, uh, uh, one person, but, um, uh, you know, w- w- one of the things I, I've really felt for the last nine months is that, um, often we have a problem getting things done because there's nobody to do them. And so Carrie winds up getting this pile that goes higher and higher every month of things that she says, well, you know, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll take care of that. And I know Travis puts a lot of time in too. So I, you know, I'm, I'm wondering if, and this is something Dick and I talked about months and months ago, if, if we would wanna think about some sort of an administrative assistant position um, that would be responsible for building maintenance. Um, but, but also just the, the, the good order of commission business. Um, and, uh, and, 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 you know, getting things like PR done, um, you know, get, getting, uh, you know, we, we could come up with, I think, a job description. Um, I know it, you know, the city council that I sat on for a number of years, we had an administrative assistant who, um, you know, basically organized and followed up and reported on and we, we could ask questions, um, you know, like about the marijuana ordinance and that person would do the research and, you know, work with, uh, you know, the corporation council and then come up with, um, you know, with, with advice. So you know, we might wanna think about that position, but combining it with, um, you know, an administrative, a, a broader administrative role. So their primary role would be to, you know, take, take care of this, you know, making sure that the building was taken care of. Um, probably supervise the custodian, um, you know, make sure that the lawns got mowed and, um, you know, make the commission aware of any problems with the building. So they could do that, but they, they could also, I think, do, you know, if we, if we got somebody with broader training, um, you know, could do some of these other things as well.
Down at El Point, the guy that's the, the maintenance guy down there. Uh, like they got, now he, what is, what is it? He does actual some of the work, correct?
Yes. So, I mean, Scott's pretty handy about some different things. I mean, he'll fix things. I mean, definitely coordinates the contracting of things out that needs to be, but, um, but yeah, I mean, he would do painting in some of the offices. He would, I mean, if there were things that need to be fixed or replaced, he would, I think that was his thing is wanted to bring it to the commission and what, to ask for approval for those things and it's what the projects that, you know, he took care of cleaning all the floors and, I mean, that was on a pretty regimented schedule there of, I feel like it was twice a year. And he was really good about communicating with us about when he was gonna be coordinating different projects and.
See, I have no problem with that. I mean, I understand what you're saying, Danny, but that's paint a pretty broad, broad paintbrush in, in this, just let me finish here. It, it, the deal is, I'm looking more towards, I, I don't know about Phyllis that's taking that a lot like, I'm looking for along the lines that somebody that actually does some of the work as far as the, the manual work. That's my thoughts. I mean, I, the PR stuff, that'd be great, some of that, but you're not gonna maybe find that same person that could do both of those things. And I don't really wanna have to hire two people. I, cause we can't handle for one thing. Where I'd be more apt to have somebody that actually does part of the work, especially if we officially get a jail bill. And that's, that person could coordinate between both buildings and they'd also be doing some of the work. That's, that's my thoughts.
We're actually going to create three buildings, cause we're gonna do the extension building too from the hire.
Closer to the mic.
Oh, sorry. They'll, they'll also be in charge of the extension building if we hire some.
Yeah, I forgot about that.
Yeah. And actually then that, I, I mean, that is a full-time job. I think if you, if you've got three, three buildings and if you're willing to, you know, if it's somebody who's doing painting and repairs and, um, and, and so on, that, that, that would make, that would make a big difference.
Yeah, I think that person needs to be somebody who can do those repairs. Cause that's where we run into the problems finding somebody to do it. But if they're capable of doing it, that'd be great.
I think, I think, um, you know, when I asked for that a few weeks ago during budget time, um, that's kind of what I was envisioning is somebody that could do those fix-it things and those maintenance things that, you know, maybe Joan's not handy with, you know, a saw or a drill or a, well, whatever. Um, but somebody that could do that so that we're not always scrambling to find someone to do those little jobs. You know, in addition to helping, you know, coordinate like the rough project and the things like that. Somebody that could kind of had that, that, uh, mechanical inclination, if that's what you wanna call it.
If, if I know, if I could interrupt to, um, you know, Carrie and I were involved with that building committee for these past few years and we toured a lot of other county jails and facilities. And I have to say, I don't believe there was a single one other than Clay County that didn't have, uh, maintenance personnel on the county's payroll. Uh, and in most cases they had multiple personnel. In fact, IT was something that, uh, some of these counties as small as Clay County had on the payroll. So we're, we're unusual in that we don't have someone in charge of maintenance in the county facilities. I, I, I don't believe there was a single one besides us that didn't have maintenance personnel.
Yeah, so it, it seems like what, what we need is a job description and a salary range. Is that something that we can ask our HR? The people to do?
Carrie, can you get a hold of Karen then?
Yeah, we sure can. I can do that.
I think Union County or, you know, they would be a good model for it. I think we've seen some success there.
Excellent.
If we do hire somebody, Andy, what are you going to do with your free time?
I, I don't know. Hopefully I'll be supervising jail construction projects, so we'll see how that goes.
But you know, even if the case is, if, if you do get somebody to do that, that takes some of the load off of Carrie. So if you're concerned about some of the administrative stuff, or it's PR stuff, then Carrie's got time to actually do some of that. Where she doesn't have right now. So I, so it's kind of a win-win. If you fill that position with somebody that's handy enough to fix things. Like, we've had lawyers off some of these chairs once in a while. That's a small thing, but that's something Joan can't do. But at least that's somebody that, you know.
So then we got to ask ourselves too, is this person going to answer to us? Are they going to answer to Carrie? Because when it comes to budget time, they're going to, they're going to have a budget also. So who, who are they going to answer to? Do we take all that away from Carrie? Make them that, that person the department head? That, of the maintenance department, and they, they just answer to us then?
I think you'd have to.
Just my, if I can offer my two cents, I mean, I think that would work the best. And then that way, you know, like Mike was saying, if you want somebody to help with the PR, you want somebody to help with other administrative things, I will fully admit that I can do that a whole lot better than I can manage a roof project. It's just not my area of expertise. So I think if we had somebody that could, that would be fabulous.
I agree also that it would be best if that person responded to the commission and just, you know, like Carrie manages her office, I manage mine. But if I have a concern about how some, someone's getting done, or something's just not getting fixed, or the sidewalks aren't getting shoveled properly, you know, I've got to lay that on Carrie's desk. And, you know, now she's managing that, even though she has personnel to do it. It, it'd be best if that person was responding to the commission. You know, in terms of the quality of the work or whatever. Again, we'd just be putting right back on Carrie if she's managing that person.
And I was trying to do a quick search in statute, because one of the things that's always intrigued me is by statute, whether any of this falls under Carrie's job duties. And I think that there's some obscure statute, I'm not coming across it right now, because chapter seven, 10, addresses county auditor and talks about the preservation, destruction of records for the, as the clerk of the county commission. Accounting records maintained, monthly verification of treasures, accounts, financial reports, general duties relating to election, et cetera, et cetera. None of these things get into that. My, my recollection is there's some statute or grouping of statutes out there that pertains to the maintenance of the facility or something to that, kind of as your guys as clerk being responsible for the, the, and here. But it sure doesn't fall under that I can find, I mean, the major job duties of the auditor. And I think that's where HR becomes by default, this kind of thing that we've talked about in the past for the auditor's office, because they maintain the finances and the payroll and all those things that are HR functions, but not really all the other stuff. And that's why you guys ended up, I think, very appropriately so, hiring our, our company that helps out with those issues, because it's an offshoot, so. But yeah, I, I can't come across, I do, I think there's some statute out there that by extension, then this, this hat goes to the auditor's office. But it's not really, not really her responsibility.
I think it was one of those things that, that I'm just guessing here, that it started that the auditor became the person here in Clay County. And it just stayed on, you know, that they became the person that charged the billing. If I can remember clear back when Esther was the Esther Dryer was, and I remember she was in control and, you know, that stuff. So I think it's just been going on and on. It's not that, she, they inherited it, basically. Got grandfathered in.
Well, it just kept getting passed on the line to the commissioners too, that the, the auditor was the steward of the court also.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, I agree.
I do think there's an old statute that addresses that, but I don't know what it is either, about the auditor being in charge of the courthouse. But, but, I guess, I'm sure it's an ancient statute.
Yeah. But it sounds like the only thing we can do is actually move some of that money out of the building fund. I don't know where else we're going to get it.
Right here on the non-northern state.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too. I had that in my mind too.
So, in, in terms of revenue, how close is that number? I mean, do, do we have an app, is, do we have an absolute number in terms of how much revenue we expect next year?
I think if it varies, it's only going to vary by a few thousand. It's not going to be a huge difference.
Okay, okay.
I got it pretty close to begin with.
Okay.
What's that? What'd she say for a number? Fifty thousand?
A few thousand.
A few thousand.
Yeah.
A few thousand, so it's, that's really close.
Well, I mean, we, we know what the taxes are going to be, the few thousands is based on who doesn't pay.
Yeah, and it's, and it's plus or minus fees.
Right.
We can add ten thousand dollars for cannabis licenses.
So Carrie, this budget only, only has one scenario, right? With the sixteen percent cash reserve?
Yeah, I mean, we kind of explored towards the, the very beginning of the budget process, you know, what it might look like if you did this or that. And, and, and that was kind of regarding how much you might have opted out for. So I think just figuring that, you know, one percent of reserve is about seventy-five thousand dollars, so roughly. You know, so if you were to hire a person and your benefits and everything came to seventy-five thousand, that might knock your reserve down a percent.
Any of the department heads have a rough estimate on what benefits are per person? Based on anybody in your office?
Well, I know health insurance is seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and some pennies a month per person.
It's probably going to vary, you know, based on wages, because retirement is six percent of the wages. And, you know, the social security and Medicare tax is six percent of the wages. The short-term disability is fairly cheap per month, right around twenty dollars a month. Life insurance is about four dollars and twenty-eight cents a month. Just throwing out some numbers there off my memory, anyway. I think I just roughly figured on the pay scale, if a person was to be, you know, a couple, you know, supervisor might be a couple steps ahead on the pay scale from where Joan's at. I think I figured benefits and all to be right around sixty thousand a year.
Carrie, other courthouse funds, how much is that repairs and? Or is it just basic upkeep? I mean, utilities, et cetera.
Of the courthouse budget itself?
Yeah.
It's like, we have sixty, well, let's see, for next year, I think I budgeted sixty-five thousand for building improvements. And then going off of memory alone, I think repairs and maintenance was more like, oh, twenty-five or thirty thousand? I won't swear by that though, I don't have it in front of me. And then there's a little bit in there for like professional services. Utilities, gosh, I can't remember that one.
But there is a, there is a budget in there, so that if we have this person hired, we actually have the funds for them to work with. For repairs and improvements. Correct?
Well, I mean, you'd have to, you'd have to add to what you're budgeting for the courthouse for the next year. You'd probably want to add that salary amount and the benefits in there.
Yeah, you'd want to add the salary, but.
Yeah.
As far as they're having a budget to work with, we do have.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they've got the sixty-five thousand for, you know, anything that would fall under improvements. Which would be things like, you know, the tuck pointing, or if we needed to, you know, replace a part of a sidewalk, or, you know, something that would be more like an improvement. And then for the just general repairs, I think we've got like another twenty-five or thirty thousand.
And also, Phyllis, to answer that question, so we spend roughly between eighty to a hundred thousand on average every year on the courthouse in maintenance and upkeep?
Correct.
I, I'm, how do I want to say this? Guesstimating, I mean, based on the bills that we've had and the work we've done, we pay about two-thirds in labor of that. So if we can get the right person, it's, it's not going to be as big a, a hit.
We'll get more done for same amount.
Yeah, so, so, so I've got these numbers here. And Carrie, you were right on the money for repairs and maintenance, twenty-six thousand five hundred requested for two thousand twenty-two. For supplies and materials, eleven thousand five hundred requested. And then four thousand for professional services and fees. Utilities were twenty-eight thousand seven fifty. And I, I would expect at least some utilities to improve. Because number one, we're not using the jail as extensively. But number two, you know, with a new roof and tuck pointing and window ceiling, I think some of those, some of those costs will, will go down. And if we get a new HVAC system, they'll go down considerably.
So just to clarify, the safety center, Andy's budget covers the utilities for that, so.
Okay.
But you are correct. I mean, if, if the new roof makes things more efficient, if the tuck pointing and the HVAC make things more efficient, then we should see a decrease there.
And we just did the windows.
Yeah. Well, I think there were, there was window ceiling.
That's what we did.
That, that was included in this bid, right?
No.
So in the, in the tuck pointing, they are caulking around the outsides. As far as like the, you know, the actual like tightening up of the windows to try to keep drafts out and stuff. We spent quite a bit of money several, few years ago to do that. Just a side note, yesterday, they were power washing the outside of the building. And we had water coming in in the register of deeds office on the front doors. Just, you know, around like the windows themselves, not necessarily where they'd be caulking around the outside, but where the windows actually open. Like, for example, in the register of deeds, it looked like it actually filled the window sill and came up over the marble sill. So things like that are still happening.
Yeah, and, and, and last winter, they, they had actual drafts coming into that room. I mean, you could stand by the window and you could feel it. I mean, there was wind coming through.
I would say every office has that problem. And they tried to fix that a few years ago when we spent all that money. And I think the drafts got better around the sides, but around those bottom sills, it just seems like it comes out from under the marble.
Yeah.
So I just want to chime in real quick, because I don't want you guys to underestimate this. I mean, I, I definitely think, I don't know what you're figuring for a salary, or if you want to plug in some numbers for an hourly wage. And when you get into handyman type of services, I would, I would just consider what you think an hourly wage should be. And also considering it's not much larger facility, much greater department. But you know, I pull up here, City of Sioux Falls, their published salaries for the year. And, I mean, their facilities management, building maintenance supervisor makes seventy-four thousand dollars a year. Custodial supervisor makes eighty thousand. And I'm not saying that we, I, I definitely think, and they have a multiple number of employees that fall under them, but their custodial worker, you know, the lowest one I'm seeing right now makes sixteen seventy-seven an hour. A number of them are making over twenty dollars an hour. And so just, I would just.
They're in the ballpark, they're at twenty bucks an hour. I mean, that's on the lower, that's forty-two thousand.
Okay.
At twenty. I would assume this position's going to be a little bit higher than that.
Yeah, I mean, a facilities manager of larger organizations takes care of enormous budgets. You know, USD's facilities manager gets paid a lot. And it's, you know, and, and functions at the vice president level, because, I mean, they, they, they got a, what? They, you know, but, but they've got a huge budget. And we're not really asking this person to have major league accounting skills, right? So, so, so we're really just looking for somebody who can fix things, not somebody who can supervise a massive budget and a huge number of people.
But you are looking for someone with definite skills and training.
Yeah.
And that's, in this town, that starts at twenty and goes up twenty-five to thirty an hour.
So if I plug in forty-five thousand dollars into, I just pulled my spreadsheet that I have that I is going to automatically calculate in O, OISI, retirement, workers' comp. You know, I put in twelve thousand dollars a year for insurance. That probably is high, I hope it is, but it might not be. I mean, that's a, you know, a thousand dollars a month for their health insurance.
Depends if the person, sorry, depends if the person has family.
Do you think it'd be higher or lower than that?
Higher.
Higher, for sure.
I mean, even if that one person came in at a thousand dollars, if they were in that age group, since they get thrown in the pool, like Lane said, we're on an average of like seven seventy-seven.
Right, the individual premium is seven seventy-seven. But when you get into employee plus child, or employee plus spouse, or family, you know, it would be higher.
Yeah.
I mean, could be double.
So if you're looking at forty-five thousand dollars a year for a salary, plus all those other deals, plus twelve thousand dollars for health insurance, I come up with sixty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents.
And getting back to Phyllis's point, you know, you get to that thirty bucks an hour. But we're also going to pay their health insurance and retirement. Somebody at thirty bucks an hour running their own business probably has all the expense.
Correct.
Now, there'll be some other expenses that we're going to incur. This person's going to need tools. They're going to need stuff to be able to work with. So I mean, there'll be, there'll be money spent upfront.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to give them an account at Harbor Freight, right?
I mean, a thousand dollars isn't going to go, I mean, that's going to get him the, the power tools that he's, a very limited assortment of power. Cordless, or, yeah, cordless power drills.
But when you consider what we're paying a person to do some of the other workarounds, you know, like my, you know, my front desk or my front counter was refinished a few years ago, and I think that was like seven hundred dollars. You know, if a person could maybe adjust their hours during the week and flex that, come in over the weekend and. You know, if a person could maybe adjust their hours during the week and flex that, come in over the weekend and refinish a countertop, I mean, that's a big savings right there.
Yeah, definitely.
Oh, yeah. It'd be nice if you could find somebody with some electrical ability, because this place certainly needs it. And, you know, that kind of stuff, that would be nice. And plumbing, yes, those two things would be great, if you could find somebody along those lines.
I want my wall, the wall repaired behind.
Did you get a plumber lately?
There's only certain things that a employee even can do.
If we fix that, Phyllis, are you coming back then?
I would, I would consider.
I have to call my son-in-law.
Phyllis, Phyllis kind of jokes about that wall, but I'll tell you, Friday, when I had Anthony from Louie's in there, you know, looking at mold testing and things like that. We walked into the commission room and he noticed the wall right away, and he said, oh, my gosh, that wasn't there a few years ago when we repaired the flood damage, and no, no, it wasn't. He said, holy cow, that's, that's bad. I don't know.
Yeah, it will take without a storm or two, and that will fall in on us or me.
And then, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I don't have the expertise to know whether that's just plaster, or whether that's actual, you know, foundation. You know, kind of buckling in or that sort of thing. I don't know those things.
Well, I didn't, I didn't see any water come in when there were pressure washing here, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I don't think it's going to be easy to find this person in this particular labor market. But I, I, I think we're all pretty agreed it would be a good idea to try to find this person. So, you know, I think we have to go on faith that eventually we, we will, but it's, I, you know, it, it may take more than one, you know, set of advertisements and.
Oh, definitely. So I suppose we should probably just set the budget at seventy-five thousand?
I'll make a motion.
Not the salaries, but total compensation at seventy-five, just for budget. Karen can give us a definite.
Sure, for budget purposes, yeah.
Yeah, just put, yeah, right there and stuff.
Plus, that'll, that'll allow us to get tools and everything.
Yeah, about a month ago, the owner of the, is it Oakleaf Property Management, has the apartment like houses here on West Main. He called me, lives in Sioux City, and he asked me, asked me if I, if I could recommend someone to do property management for his place, because that, the person that's been doing that is retiring. So he's looking for one right now, and I told him I have no idea, of course. But, yeah, hopefully we could run on to get someone that would work out well for that.
Yeah, and I, I think the idea of, you know, getting somebody who's a property manager type. Is, I mean, that, that's, that's actually good, good language to use with the HR firm to give them a sense of what we're, what we're actually looking for.
Is that true? Property management tends to get into the rental and all of that, so.
Yeah.
Not so much the maintenance, they're, they're hiring the maintenance. We want a maintenance person, somebody who can knows how to use the tools. And can spot a problem and go look for the, how to solve the problem.
Well.
Facility, facility maintenance supervisor, maybe?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, that's what he was, he, that's what he was looking for, is someone that would be taking care of, of small projects and repairs and those sorts of things. He specifically said that.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion?
No, no.
So is this something that we're, well, I guess we can cross that bridge when you approve the annual budget, but I was going to say, is that something we're adding to the budget? So I've got to publish any changes that we made from the provisional, and so I guess we can do that all at once when we pass it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I think that then the revenue would also come out of the building, the building fund.
That will need a motion at some time, right, Carrie, to move that out of the building fund?
Yep. Yep, at some point, we'll have to do that, too.
So if you want to get ahold of Karen right away. I think.
I will send her an email yet today.
I think we should advertise for this as fast as we can. And what's everybody's thought if we actually happen to find somebody the first of November? Are we good with trying to come up with the money somewhere for this year?
I think that'd be a good idea.
I'm agreement.
Well, why can't we take the money out of the building?
We can, but I just want to make sure that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Just in case we happen to find somebody.
Yep.
I think if we get a chance, we need to hire somebody.
And I think we're coming into a good time of year where people are going to want to work inside.
Yeah.
It's true.
Other, other than shoveling the sidewalks. Because I think this, I think we should have this, that fall under their purview too now, instead of hiring somebody to scoop the sidewalks. We're still got to have somebody do the parking lot, but unless we can work something out with the highway department and the skid loader. We'll have to see.
Yeah, that's a possibility, too. You know, this is like a further ahead here, but you know, we have the garage here where she keeps the mower and stuff. But you know, if you get some tools and stuff for somebody to work on it, there's nowhere here to keep any of that stuff. They're going to have to keep it out there. I don't know how much room is even in that building to.
There's enough of that.
There's enough, yeah.
And come winter time, you know, we can store that mower somewhere else.
Right.
The one thing we may have to, might have to look at is insulating that building and heating it.
Right. Because I mean, otherwise, you, you know, if you have a project you want to do, you can't set up in here, you'd have to set up out there, you know, I mean, I would think.
Well, that and the batteries for those cordless drills.
Right.
Don't like being froze.
No, not at all. Work very long.
And then we could store other chemicals instead of them in the in other places, too. If it doesn't freeze, they could be dropped off out there.
Right. And if you did get to the point where you wanted some of the snow removed, and you wanted to have a, you know, a bobcat in town, town here. You'd want it in a place like that, too.
Yeah. We'll have to see.
Yeah, those are things to look at, though. And did, I know that, I understand that you talked to the 4H about, we were talking about money, about some of that billing fund, too. Never going to come up with a list of projects?
Yes.
Yes, I talked to Mike Carlson, he told me that, that if you talk to, and I think that's a good spot. And I, I don't know how everybody else, I mean, I look at this, that we got fourteen point seven three, it's what we're carrying over for money.
I'm showing sixteen.
Yeah.
Well, maybe I'm looking at it, I'm seeing fourteen.
Do you have a July one?
Yeah. And I didn't get to revise.
Are you talking about the surplus cash?
Yeah.
Yeah, after you guys passed the opt-out, I think we were sitting at sixteen, roughly.
Okay, so that's what changed it. It's what sixteen.
And that sixteen's that, that's leaving the non-mandated stuff alone, correct?
Correct, right.
I guess one of the questions I have, if you cut a hundred thousand dollars out of that mandated one. Do you have any idea how, how much that would move that sixteen?
She said one percent is.
One point.
One point is all?
About seventy-five thousand is one point.
Yeah.
Okay. It's not a huge move, is it?
No, but if that's a, if that's a maintenance facility person, or.
I know.
And the other, you know, I, I wanted to go through the non-mandated stuff before I brought up Andy's investigator that he's going to need some point. I mean, I think he's missing a big piece of his workforce over there if we can't investigate efficiently. But that's because there can be another vehicle with that.
Yeah, I went through that mandated stuff about three, four times. It's, it's, it's difficult to do. I can't see that you can sit back and say half, fifty percent on a lot of these. I just, you're not going to cut enough out if you do, I'm sorry. Because there's a few of these things I think you need to leave in. And I, I just can't see how you can not take it, you can't leave it, and I think they're doing too much for enough people, you know? Sorry, Phyllis, I, I, I know that that's one's deer is hard to your heart, and I get it, I really honestly do, but I, the Arts Council, but I, I think it's hard to sit back here and look at these. I mean, I think you got to leave teen, teen court in, I can't.
No, I, I, I absolutely agree on teen court, because teen court saves us money at the other end.
Yeah, see, that's my point, and I know that, I've talked to the food pantry, they know that they, they're probably not going to get anything or less, and I, so I don't think that'll be a problem right now. Maybe another year down the line, we have to look at this again, and then we'll have to decide. Salvation Army, I think that we could cut them out, too, I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm headed that direction. And the, the Wakanda Ministries, I think that that's a god. And the Lewis and Clark Drug Abuse, Drug Abuse and Lewis and Clark Mental Health, I got to leave that.
Yep.
I take out the Beersford Library, the Vermillion Library, and the Wakanda Library. I take out the Austin Whitmore House National Music Museum, Vermillion Arts Council, WHR Museum. I leave in, this is just me, I'm leaving in the Fairmore.
At what level?
At the level they're at right now, sixteen thousand.
But we're giving them four thousand with the mower.
Yeah, but they got to hire somebody to, to run that mower.
Well, Missy said she was going to mow.
They got to have to give her more money to, in order to do it.
Well, that's up to them.
Okay.
I just, I assumed that.
So what do you want to do with the Fairmore?
Well, I thought eight, I thought, I thought half, because then we're going to give them back four that they were spending for mowing.
Okay, I'm all right with that. Okay, Dakota Senior Mills, I kind of think you better leave that in.
I agree.
The Main Street Center.
No.
No, I can't do it. And the soil conservation, I don't know, that's one I wasn't really sure on.
Dick, I, I wanted to ask you about the soil conservation line item and what you know about that.
I mean, that's twenty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Or no.
Twenty-five.
Really increased one year, they used to be thirteen.
Yeah.
Travis probably knows more about that than I do.
There's a lot of.
I mean, if you start looking at that, that's one that's pretty good size.
Yeah.
And then we take out the Vermillion now. Sestac will be fine. I'm on the board, we'll be fine. They're going to hate you, but I'll, it's what it is. I think, because we, and I'm saying that this year we'll be fine because we got the COVID money. And I'm not saying that's going to be good in the future, but this year I think it'll be all right. I don't know a lot about decobilities. I, I don't know enough about it.
What does that fall on? Carrie, do you know what the decobilities?
I've been told about it, too, but I just don't know exactly what it's something, I'm not sure what it all contains.
But getting back to soil conservation.
Yeah.
I don't know, Mikey, Dick, were you on when we were having those big discussions with them?
We kept asking for budgets and very poor results of what their budget was.
We got the budget the one year that they, we asked for it, yeah, because we were going to cut them.
Decobilities?
No, no, soil conservation.
But isn't what, was that when Mike Lynch and those guys are all in here that time?
That was one of the times.
Yeah. Yeah, they really couldn't give us a budget.
No, and we, we told them we needed one every year, so I mean, sitting here asking, you know, what how to cut them, I can't, because they will never give us a budget. But I'm not saying that they, they need to stay either.
Right.
Because they're, they, they haven't followed through with what we've asked.
Right.
Yeah, I, I have to say that if, if nobody on the commission knows and they haven't told us. I, I, I don't, I don't see that we should give them any money. I mean, I, I, I mean, I guess I, I just assumed that they were in essential service of some sort, but clearly not.
And in my recollection, there was, there was little effort for revenue to meet their own needs, and that, I know that always disturbed me.
Which one was this? I'm sorry, I was moving from one.
Oh, soil conservation.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they were at thirty-five thousand for a number of years, and then they, they got some new management in there and dropped it down to twenty-five. But never really had a great budget for us to look at.
No.
So they were actually hired?
They were hired.
They were hired, dropped them down.
But when I first got on, they were at thirteen.
Yeah. I thought later on that, well.
And they weren't, at that time, I didn't think they were working very hard to try and be sustainable on their own. I think it's getting a little better, I mean, they're trying to sell more trees, but.
Yeah, the drilling, the seed drilling program and the tree planting program, they, remember, we had the refrigerated truck, too, was three years ago, to store those out in the.
Yeah, and I think that's when Mike and the rest of the board was in here looking for that tree.
And that was for that trailer, trailer situation.
Right.
So. Yeah.
But, yeah, I think that, that planning program has been way down, I think, now.
I haven't seen them out very much.
So what's your proposal, Mike?
My proposal?
On soil conservation.
I cut them. Let's go to zero.
Okay, I didn't bring my darn notes along this time, so, sorry.
The question I have is, okay.
So my, my thoughts have been pretty much along yours, okay?
Okay. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Excuse me.
No, no, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I, I just wanted to point out that I didn't bring my list along, but my list sounds a lot like the suggestions you've made.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, mine matches up. I, I would also, though, cut decobilities.
Carrie, do you know what decobilities are?
I, I know, I've, I've got.
Did you find it?
Yeah, I've got, I've got their website up here, and, oh, go ahead, Carrie.
Oh, that's okay, I was just going to say, I think they're similar to Sestac.
Yeah, they are.
They are, and they work out of Sioux Falls. Their mission statement is working together, we create opportunities and meaningful lives for people with disabilities. They have day services, residential services, nursing, admissions, alternative services, adaptive equipment development and repair. And physical therapy. But I, I, I mean, I, I, I haven't seen them work in this community. Maybe, maybe they do, but we have Sestac who basically does that.
See, I think they go, I think they actually take some of the clients from Sestac away from Sestac.
Okay.
I think, because I, I, it seems like when I've been in a meeting, it's been brought up once. And I, you know, and it says that, and I, I just, for the life of me, I tried to think of the last night, I was going to call it, you know, but I didn't, I hated to call it that, but I'm wondering if that's something, I agree, I think it's something, maybe we could cut out. You know, why should we give money to a company that's not in Clay County? Where we've got a, a place in Clay County that uses the same services, presents the same service, and we're not going to give, and if, going by my theory, we're not going to give them any. I'd much rather give them money than give them, I guess that's what I'm saying.
Yep.
That make sense?
Carrie, where does CASA fall under?
Um, I don't think we give any money to CASA unless it falls under the, no, it's not under teen court, so I don't think we give any to them.
Okay.
They had asked, and we did not give. I do have a question, and this is, yes, we'll go with the Arts Council. There are two or three grants that we will be going for that do require matching. There are two or three grants that we will be going for that do require matching funds or in kind. Is there any possibility of? County providing any in kind?
Do you know how much, Phyllis?
Basically would be about five thousand dollars worth of in kind. We'd be going for a twenty thousand dollar grant.
What kind of in kind work are you talking?
Um.
She's answering that right now.
I'm I'm going, if we could get someone to help mow or we'd end up having other money we could put to the cash match, you know? We pay all of our utilities and all of the mowing for that back lot. This just came to mind, so I haven't really thought it all through, what the possibilities, but seems like there's some. Possible work that maybe Highway Department or something might assist with. Not an ongoing, but here and there that would save us funds to be able to use for the that cash match.
Yeah, I mean, I I I do think there are a lot of nonprofits in town who have the same problem. Um, and I. I mean, this is, this is a a rough year. Um, one, one question about the Vermillion Now pledge is um. Is whether we have, because it's a um, it's a pledge. Are we required in any way to make good on that pledge? I mean.
No.
Okay.
No, I've talked to Nate about it.
Oh, okay.
Because it is a pledge, I think.
Yeah, I I just, you know, I wanted to make sure there was no contractor.
No, I did, you know, to per- with caveat, I I thought it was gonna be about fifty percent, cause that's what I thought. I mean, to begin with, I was right where we're at right now, but. I thought it was gonna be a fifty, so they're just gonna have to understand.
Okay, so what do we got?
So like, it's uh, seven thousand for teen court. Four one seven six for drug abuse. Eighteen nine one seven for mental health. And eight thousand.
Eight two fifty for the board.
Eight two fifty, okay. Eight two fifty for the board. Um, forty-five fifty for senior meals. And that's it.
Thirty-nine thousand, one thirty-four.
So that's gonna free up a hundred and twenty-one thousand.
Hundred and twenty-one thousand? And I guess with the Fairboard, even though you're cutting it back eight thousand. Down to that eight thousand two fifty, but I mean, you are actually, if we're willing to help them out with some of their other expenses. In the mowing, like you said, it isn't so bad. I mean, it's not great, but anyway.
Still a cut.
Yes, yes, no matter how you cut it.
And they're gonna have to work a little harder now, cause they're gonna have to figure out who's gonna mow.
Yeah, you know, one of the things is, if this is the first year that I've been on the board. That basically none of these places sent us a letter or anything.
We weren't, yeah, so they were only asked to send a letter if we wanted an increase.
So I I'd like to suggest that in the future, we create some sort of application process. You know, for in future years where, you know, a couple of months beforehand, um, you know, we uh, uh, ask organizations for applications that describe. What they'll actually do for the money. Um, because I I I fundamentally oppose giving out free money. You know, we 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 allocate money when we get some sort of benefit back. And I think, you know, some of these organizations like Lewis and Clark. Uh, did a really good job of telling us exactly what they use the money for, and they gave us numbers and so on. Uh, it wouldn't be a bad thing to ask, uh, you know, each organization what 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 benefit the county gets for the money, exactly how they'll spend it. And it it wouldn't be a time-consuming process, but then we wouldn't have to gas either. I mean, I feel like we're 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 sitting here kinda guessing because, you know, in some cases, people haven't told us.
Just to be aware that if you do that, you will get twice as many applications.
And you know what? That's nothing wrong with that.
Yep, just making you aware.
But even if they'd give us the applications, we're still in the same boat.
Yeah.
Cause they have done that, you know? Where they've come in and told us what they're doing. Just about every one of them.
Yeah, but I I, you know, I think what I like about asking for applications is that it forces organizations to think about what am I doing for the county? It's like a, it's a good process for them so that they feel responsible to us to get done what it is that. You know, that we're, we're giving them money to do. I mean, right now, we just sort of, you know, we give people money. But 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 we'd like to know what what the citizens of the county get for the money, and that I think that would be a good process for the whole community. You know, I I'm not thinking solely of us. I'm also thinking about how it changes the way organizations behave. Um, they'll maybe be a bit more responsive to, you know, county residents.
On a, sorry, on a side note with that, I like the idea. As a private business owner, I switched over to that. Years and years and years ago, uh, just because you always get the groups coming in asking for twenty bucks, fifty bucks, hundred dollars. Switched up, uh, Greg Peters started it out at ace at the time, but. Always had them fill out an application because it forces them to tell you what they're doing with the money. And found out that people don't like doing that. They're just hitting up money to get money, and the number of applications. Decreased a ton, or people requesting funds. So it may end up being the same way with the county as well.
So we don't have to do anything today as far as making these decisions, or do we?
No, Carrie's just gonna have to. She needs to know so she can have a final budget. We'll vote on it the next meeting.
See, I'm I'm uh. I don't know how to say, I mean, I like, I know what Phil's saying with the in kind. Not sure how, and maybe that's something, Phyllis, you're gonna have to look at, see if she can come up with some ideas, you know, cause. I guess I wouldn't be completely against it. I'm just not sure how it all works out. You know what I mean?
I'm not either. It was just something that came to mind that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was accepted as, you know, some of these grants require that you can say that you have the match. Well. We don't have the match anymore at this point, so.
Well, for discussion right now, Andy, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Thanks.
Do you have any idea what that extra officer and a patrol car is gonna cost?
Yeah, um, with benefits not including health insurance, uh, depending on experience, I'd say, uh, at an entry level. We're probably looking at around, this is with benefits, but not insurance, about fifty thousand dollars at an entry level person. If we added. Added someone and just, uh, you know, lucked into somebody with significant experience, it was worth paying for, it might be, you know, closer to sixty thousand. Plus health insurance. Um, of course, a vehicle, it depends on if we were to add a, you know, for this purpose, we wouldn't be looking for a patrol type vehicle. Likely, we we might be able to get something off surplus like we did with that van. So in that case, we'd be looking, you know, maybe less than twenty thousand dollars. On the high end, it'd be something more like, well, I guess Ina did it. Uh, she actually bought a used vehicle for her purposes. So. I I think that especially at the outset, we'd probably wanna control those costs much as we can and find a uh, something off surplus.
But that's gonna have to be a four-wheel drive vehicle.
Likely ideally an all-wheel drive, something, uh, you know, maybe, maybe a uh, one of the Explorers. That could be, that could be repurposed for for this. Those those Ford Explorers have been really good patrol vehicles. They're just all around, uh, have really served us well. Ideally.
Do you remember what you put in the budget for the for the vehicle? Thirty-four thousand?
Um, no, it was more than that. Let me, let me find that for you here. Got that. Right now I have requested uh, sixty-seven thousand, five hundred, and that is intended to be one and a half vehicles. Um, cause we discussed changing, uh, trying to do one and a half vehicles a year, so we're not driving them. Eight plus years, we'd be driving in the neighborhood of six years. And um, uh, prior year, I think we we budgeted forty-five. I I could be wrong about that.
Yeah, that's what one and a half of sixty-seven is, is forty-five.
Yeah.
Hold it in there.
So that's about a hundred and twenty thousand if we figure somebody with experience plus health insurance and a new car. And that's worst case scenario for us. We can cheapen it up if we can get a used vehicle. That's about the only place we're gonna save any money.
So the special interest things, cutting them is about right where we're at. Damn, I thought we were gonna go the other way. Save it one place, spin it another.
Well, we're trying to get the most bang for our buck.
Yes, no, I agree. I agree.
Yeah. I should, I should mention, um, if we did change, uh, you know, our personnel costs, we would probably wanna revisit our Irene and Wakanda contracts. Those are, those are currently based on um, the average deputy salary, and if that average deputy salary were to go up or down, then then we would probably wanna talk to them about that. And uh, I I don't imagine it would change significantly, certainly not gonna make up that difference. Uh, we did, we did when we started contract with Irene, essentially funded the seventh deputy that we have. And um. And then we give them thirty of those forty hours a week. So um, but it might be reasonable to uh, do that. We we have a built-in um. Clause in that contract that that increases it annually based on the COLA that that you folks uh, put on the wage scale. So. There, it hasn't sat still for these past five years, and and I actually just did a little math, and they're just a uh, three hundred dollars less than an average deputy salary right now. So. There, you know, so we're, we're, we're doing uh, pretty well. Uh, this year's, this year's contract is three hundred dollars less than next year's average deputy salary. So I I think those contracts are still, still holding up as as intended. But if if our needs have become greater, we might need to revisit that.
You have office space for another deputy?
They they just double up on on the desks a little bit more. So um. Yeah, we we could squeeze them in the deputy's office.
Okay.
It would be best if if uh, if we had an investigative position that they have separate space, but in the new facility, uh, if we, if we get, keep that moving, uh, we should accommodate that. In the short term, we'll be fine.
Okay. Cause I'd hate to lose the school resource officer.
No, I agree. I I think that proactively, that's a very valuable thing. Um, it's it it goes back to um, geez, nineteen. Nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-seven, I believe, was when we, we started having a full-time school resource officer in Vermillion and. And uh, I've, over the years, I've spoken to the current and former police chief about. Uh, their ability to cover that if we were not, and it would be a very difficult for them. In that they, if they could add staff today, they would add it on the road, similar to my needs. And um, and that would be hard for them to do, and. Uh, since we have it, it's functioning and it's successful. You you really hate to disrupt that and lose that. Service that we're providing to the school. So, yeah, if we could, if we could keep that, that would be a good thing. And by the way, I do uh, I do get weekly reports from school resource officers on on activities up there that. In excess of the things that are actually the kind of things the cops write reports about. And uh, there there's quite a few. I I don't have it in front of me, but there there's a lot of interventions that they do besides uh, uh. Administrative meetings with staff and and other things that they do with the school besides what you would consider as police work up there. And um, I could always present that if if necessary, if we ever need to defend that position.
I just wanted to bring that up again, just.
Yeah.
It falls somewhere in between the wants and the.
Yeah.
So depends on where we're comfortable at. I think the the built facility maintenance person is first. On adding staff, I should say.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
Cause what would that put us at? Well, if we were to, we do the facility maintenance person, do these cuts. And add a deputy, that puts us about what, fifteen percent?
Add what?
About fifteen percent. We're at sixteen-three right now.
Oh, right, okay.
I figured we'd drop a little bit. And that could be offset on what we can save on building maintenance. That's, it's an unknown. It's just where we have to. What we have to look at right now.
Hopefully we can find it like.
Yeah, that's gonna be key.
That's the key thing.
Yeah.
That somebody to kind of go, definitely go getter, and definitely could see things, they could do other, other jobs here, you know?
Someone that spots needs on their own.
Yep.
I'm sure there's plenty of people in the office to spot for them too.
Yeah.
That's gonna be the problem. There's gonna be a list.
Yeah.
That he's gonna, he or she's gonna feel very overwhelmed with.
Yeah.
To begin with.
Yeah, I suggest we, um, yeah, I anticipate a work order sort of situation where employees would report light bulbs out and things like that, uh, and on the larger things, but. Uh, during your conversation earlier, I was doing a little bit of research on. A few people I know that work at the university who would have these skills, and uh, I think that we could be competitive with those salaries that they have up at the U. I also know a few other people around town working elsewhere without naming names that I think would have these skills and. And and I think that they would be worthy of discussion with. So I'm I'm confident we would get applicants. And you you ideally would choose some some qualified people and 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 then vet their skills and. And I think that, I think this could be filled with the amount of money that you're looking at budgeting for.
Sounds good. Seems like there was something. I can't think of it right now. Oh, I know who it was. Registered Needs Office. Didn't she come in with just twenty percent on her supplies and?
Yeah.
Everything twenty percent? We should probably look at that.
Well, that's right. Blanket. And she went up to six point seven two percent.
Now, I do know, she didn't, she didn't request anything for utilities. Do we know why, Carrie?
I have no idea, I wonder if it was just a simple omission.
So she went up on repairs and maintenance, data processing. Supplies, materials, travel. And utilities is missing, so, just those that I listed off is thirty-three hundred dollars. I mean, we're not talking. Significant, significant dollars here.
Data processing, she's got ten thousand in her twenty-one budget, but she's got sixteen hundred and forty-six is all she's used.
Right. And a three-year average of about seven thousand.
Yeah, so we got a three-year average of seven, and she wants twelve?
Yeah, maybe we ought to ask what that's for.
Yeah.
Oh, definitely.
That's, that's quite an increase, so the three-year average.
Do you want, do you want to just put her on the next?
Yeah, because it could be, you know, something like digitizing records, or in which case, you know.
Well, how many, how many years has she been in?
That was my question, because.
Some of us want me to grab Lisa, I'm in a, I'm in a presentation with her right now, I could just grab her real quick and bring her out in the hall.
So what's her three, okay, so she's getting into her three-year. Because I know she's made a lot of changes.
Yeah, I know she has, yeah. I know she brought in some revenue, too.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, it's really streamlined the process quite a bit. I guess I should say some of the processes.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not saying we need to cut anything, it's just that twenty percent jump.
You're right.
Did you want me to do that then? Oh.
It might be easier if we do this at the next meeting.
Okay, no problem.
That way, she'll have the numbers in front of her to. Explain.
Right.
And if you can tell her, Carrie, it's just under those. You know, it has, it's not those salary lines or anything, it's just the repairs, maintenance, data processing, and then why she left out utilities.
Yep, I'll do that.
Okay.
Travis, this is Andy.
Yes.
I'm jumping back to the, the idea of the investigator position, I was looking at our. Our plans for vehicle rotation, and we actually have the outgoing vehicle in twenty-twenty-two. That's scheduled to go out, is actually the kind of one that, you know, Ina would generally want. She's always asked if I had a good vehicle going out, this one here might have some life left in it, it's possible we could just hold that vehicle instead of trading it. And, you know, we generally don't get a lot on the trades, we're talking, you know, less than ten thousand dollars, significantly less, so, I think we could hold that vehicle. Rather than trade it out.
And, and hold it for what, a new position, you mean?
Yeah, if we added a position, I don't think we'd need to buy a vehicle.
Okay.
That we could just hold it, and what that means is that on the purchase of the new one, we wouldn't have a trade-in, so we'd pay a few thousand dollars more, but. I never really anticipate a lot on those trade-ins anyway, and I try to budget for the purchase cost, so.
It could give us about thirty-five hundred dollars for those vehicles, don't they?
Yeah, yeah, and this vehicle that's outgoing, if you ever seen our marked patrol cars, we have one that's a different color. And that's because, at one time, my chief deputy, Jeremy West, I had him in an unmarked car, and. And then we've marked it since then, and that one, I think, has some, some life left in it, and if I was gonna. If I was gonna ever hold a vehicle, that would be the one, and I would just strip the markings off, and. And if we did add a position, I think that you would, that would be the way to go.
So we're back to approximately sixty-seven or seventy thousand dollars?
At the upper end, yes.
Yeah. It just kicks the can down the road a little bit.
That is true, yes, that's a first-year savings, it would be an ongoing cost.
So does this, you anticipate this person to not put as many, near as many miles on, is there other deputies?
Yeah, well, it's hard to say. Ideally, that they would be running the scenes and things like that, but they wouldn't be patrolling, they wouldn't be just driving. And bringing a tank of gas a shift or anything like that, it would probably equate to my usage. So, or maybe our school resource officer, some, a few of us just put less miles on, for example, me, the chief deputy and school resource officer, supposed to put less miles on than the. Other deputies that are driving to Irene and back and patrolling, and I would anticipate that sort of usage, so. It would be less miles and a lot lighter duty.
Okay.
While we're discussing budgets, guys, I just wanted to kind of give you a heads-up that. At the next meeting, I'm gonna come in with Rhonda and Lisa, Ina. I'm gonna try to get Patty and then this new software company, Patty's retiring, long story short, I've kind of been preparing you guys for that for a while. Within the next four years, and so it's time to kind of start a sophomore conversion. We've received an offer from a company that's moving into South Dakota, and I think it's gonna be a good opportunity. Long story short, but it could have the potential to save the county a hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Nothing for the twenty-twenty-two budget, so by the time any of this would be implemented, it would be close to the end of the year, next year. And so, be kind of thinking about that for the next budget, the twenty-twenty-three, that some of those software costs are gonna change a little bit. Possibly not higher, but different, for sure, and they are looking to have an agreement signed by the end of October, so that's why I wanted to have them meet with you and explain what they can offer. And so just, you know, have that in the back of your minds, but nothing to decide today. I guess essentially what they're offering us is to give us a software fee in exchange for a maintenance contract for ten years.
So they're gonna get it back?
Actually, you know, their maintenance contract doesn't sound like much more than what we pay Patty, so I think it could even out. And it's cloud-based, so we wouldn't have the purchase of that IBM mainframe that we have every so many years, so we'd save on hardware costs, too.
So nobody's taking over Patty's business?
No.
Okay. Anybody else have anything they want to discuss on the budget?
Before you adjourn, could I jump in on one issue, and this is just an FYI. In case, for some reason, I'm not in your next meeting, but I do have a deputy that was activated with the guard, he'll be back to work before the end of the month. But I have another one that's activated with the guard, got his orders yesterday officially, and he'll be gone October first for four hundred and forty days, so. We'll be, we'll be shorthanded again for the next year, and I'm sure I'll communicate with you about that, but I wanted. Make that known to you in case you might hear about it.
Thank you. Carrie, one question on this budget, does Phil and Sam's new. New contract for court-appointed attorney, does that, does that reflected in here?
Not yet, but I think it went down, correct? I think, if I remember correctly, we projected that to go down.
Yeah, so if you can fix that.
Yeah, I'll have a good, I'll have a good final copy for you guys at the next meeting, well, before the next meeting, so you can all review it.
Sounds good. Nobody has anything else? Are you a second? You did make it.
I'll do a second.
I've got a motion and a second, all those in favor, roll call.
Yep.
Is that me? Hi, yes. Is Mike on?
Manny?
Yes.
Hammond?
Yes.
We're adjourned, thank you.